Welcome to another edition of Minut matters here at the Dakota and brought to you by shock safe and lock. I'm Jonathan Starr. We continue interviewing some candidates for city council here in Minot. Today we are joined by Mike bless him. Thank you for coming on today, Mike.
Good to be with you, Jonathan.
Absolutely. So right here at the before we get into the hard questions, let's just talk about kind of you as a person. Tell us a little bit your history of mine, your family, who are you?
Sure. So yeah, I've been here nearly all my life, born and raised here, left for a few years around college, got a chemical engineering degree. At U N D went to Minneapolis for a couple of years, but came back and had been back in mine it since 2001. So born and bred, long time and a long time minor guy. One, one interesting thing in my background for this race in particular is that my grandma Maxine Donetsk was the first female city council member.
Okay, that's incredible.
Which is, which is, it's, it's an interesting fact. I mean, I, you know, I just heard, I just learned about that a few years ago. And so it's kind of an interesting. You know, history with that. So yeah, I'm sort of proud to carry on that tradition. My other grandma on my mom's side was a long time. Democratic precinct leader and things like that as well. And so I guess maybe it runs a little in the blood.
Right.
Not something that, you know, I hadn't, haven't run until for office until this point, but kind of an interesting point. Met my wife Sherry at, at mine at high in 10th grade. I've been together ever since. We have two grown kids. I'm privileged every day to, to work with them. My son is my business partner in our accounting firm. My daughter runs our front desk. My wife is there during tax season. So I couldn't be more blessed. We got a wedding coming up in about two weeks for my daughter marrying her fiance Justin. And then we've got our first grandchild due.
That's exciting.
So yeah, we had everything, everything good at once. You got to pile it all into just a few months, you know, let's run a campaign.
Right. Let's throw a campaign in the mix. Is Justin a good dude?
He's, he's a great dude. Yeah. Justin is, Justin is, uh, you know, he wants to be a game and fish guy long term. Just getting back to mine at finishing up his degrees graduating right now. My daughter's flying out there to be with them and then they're coming back on Saturdays. So. Couldn't be more proud to have him join the family.
Absolutely. And you went to U N D. So was it always in the cards to return back to mine after you graduated from U N D?
It was, you know, we, I graduated from U N D in 1998. In those days, there wasn't a lot. I have an engineering degree. And so. There wasn't a lot of that going on in Western North Dakota. You know, you could go to work for Dakota gas and Beulah. There was a few things. But I was working at three M loved it there. It was, it was a great place to be. And then we started having kids. And really turned our focus to coming home. I left the engineering world, went into I T consulting for a while. Eventually got into more general management. I worked at, at M L T or Delta vacations for 12 years in management there. And then went to a startup to run a property management company for a little while. And then we had the opportunity to buy the accounting firm. And so. It's been wonderful. About two and a half years into that now. It's been great.
Entrepreneurship got in your blood and you couldn't get it out.
Yeah, exactly. You know, I think that's, that's one of the things that we see in mine and especially in our line of business as accountants, they entrepreneurs need accountants and they come in and they come to our office. We've got a lot of demand for that. And I love working with them. I, that's, that to me is the lifeblood of the community is, is new startups and new ways of doing things. And it's so much fun to do that.
Absolutely. So in all this, now you've been involved in politics in general over the past few years, but when did the decision for you to go ahead and make that run for city council really come into play?
Yeah. So, you know, for me, city council was never high on my list.
Right.
You know, one of the main reasons for that is so much of what the council does hits so close to home for people, you know, you're, here you're talking about, you know, it, you know, is, is with the recycling program. There's a city coming right into your driveway to look in your trash can and you know, decisions that are made are very close to home. So I always thought, you know, maybe the legislature down the road, maybe, maybe something along those lines. But this decision really came about through the human relations committee process, you know, I was on with you before and we talked about that. And the, you know, the reason is, is that as I got involved there, as I've been at budget meetings, the last few years, been watching really closely what's going on. What I, the point that I got to was through the human relations committee processes that I learned that could be effective. Okay. And I learned that the expertise and maybe the way I go about things actually could make a difference. And so. That's why I wanted to step in and do it, you know, it's to me, that's such an important thing. I care about the world that I leave for my kids.
Yes.
I want to show them that you have to get involved. You can't sit back and let somebody else do that. And so for me, this is how I do that. I do other political things around the state. Involved in the Republican party in different ways. And so, you know, that to me kind of solidified it that I could be effective at what I was doing. Yeah. And hopefully make a difference for the city.
Right. So, and you decided to do it with two other people, which is kind of a unique approach. I'm sure it's been done before. But it's a unique approach for city council where you're on a ticket, not literally a ballot. You don't have to vote for all three.
Right.
If somebody doesn't want to, but you guys are running together. What, where did that idea come about?
Well, you know, really the legislative world does that a lot.
Absolutely.
That's they run as teams there and it's, it's really to provide a united front so that people understand kind of where you're coming from, from a political perspective. And it's no different here. And so, you know, Rob, Rob Fuller, Scott Samuelson and I, I knew each of them individually in different ways. And when they both had mentioned to me that they were thinking about running and, you know, I knew that their, their way of looking at the world was similar to mine. We're not going to agree on everything, but, but in general terms, we're going to be looking at the same approach to how we would approach the council. And so we thought that that would provide the voter with a good way of understanding what the playing field looked like for who they were voting for. And so, yeah, I mean, there's no expectation that everybody will vote exactly for the three of us. You know, there may be people that for one reason or another might vote for another candidate, but like two of us and, and that, that all makes sense. But we wanted the voters to understand that here's what you're going to get. If you like what you're hearing from Rob, if you like what you're hearing from Mike, you're likely to get a lot of the same thought processes from all three of us. Now that's a campaign thing. So while this is going on through election day, that's how we're going about it. The signage around town has all three names, the stuff we do on Facebook has that. The moment we're elected though, it's separate ways because we have to be independent on the council. You've got, you've got public meeting law. There's all kinds of reasons why that'll be the case. And we will look at the world different on certain things. And so, you know, I don't want people to think that it's always just a, it's a new team that's taking everything over. And that's the point. No, the idea is to help people understand. Where we're coming from so that they can make a good informed choice on election day.
Absolutely. And I, you, we see that through some of the marketing you guys have done where we get to, you guys write your letters or whatever. And we're able to see your guys' individual opinions. One thing you mentioned was that you're a Republican and this is a technically nonpartisan seat, right? Politics, but stay out. But we live in a world where politics is intertwined itself into basically every single thing now. How do you feel like that affects maybe even the future of city politics? As we see the, our, our conservative values or our liberal values really start to mingle a lot more than what they have used to.
Sure. So, you know, the, the nonpartisan roles in our city, whether it's the council, the school board, the county, you know, at the local sub level. That, that I think is an important thing. At the same time, as you mentioned though, we have our points of view. There's, there's no denying that. That's, that is the way that it is. And so for me, it's, it's important to be clear about that. So, you know, if you see our signage, it says conservatives for city council. We're very clear about who we are.
Yeah.
And, and what that means then, whether it's where, whether it's party in the Republican party and the platform there, or, or just being conservatives, what people can expect then is what they. Expect from other conservatives in other areas, you know, we're going to be for small government. We're going to be for lower taxes. We're going to be for controlling government spending and holding the line in certain areas. Now, um, another way that that, that comes through, and this really became the H R C discussion was, you know, government isn't the solution to many things.
Yeah.
Government is the solution to a few very specific things. And if we can do those things well, the, the citizens are going to be very happy with their government. But it's when we branch out into things where we're overlapping with the private sector or nonprofits, or we're getting into areas where, where it doesn't fit real well. That the government isn't very good at it. And that's one of the things that as a, as a conservative and just who I am, that's part of my pledge to the people is that I'll try to keep us out of those things.
Right.
We're going to be focused on the police force, on fire, on picking up garbage, on making sure the water is good, you know, all the things that are fundamental, public services. That our tax dollars should be going for, let's do, let's be great at those, you know, that's, let's be the best in the state at performing those things. And let some of the other stuff go to the private sector because they do it better.
One of the things we're best in the state is our property taxes. And we'll talk about that with the highest property taxes in the state. But I think you make an interesting point and I've asked others this question. You've touched on it a little bit already, but what specifically is the role? That government should play in city politic or in the city, not city politics, but in the city.
Yeah, it's really what I just got it. It's, it's fundamental services and, and you know, the ones that I mentioned are the most important, police and fire first and foremost, right? Public safety, keeping the public safe. When you call nine on one, the fire department shows up on my way here just now. Fire department went, went going down Broadway headed where they're going. And you know, it's, it hit home a little more for me now, after being through the budget meetings and hearing from the chief. And you know what? These are, these are people, these are our friends and neighbors that are going.
Right.
To a house now, or a business, or whatever it is to perform their duties. That's what we're paying them for. And that's what we're buying with those property tax dollars. That's where we need to be focused again on, on clean water. You know, we've got the Nas project that's, that's bringing water from Lake Sakakawea. Has been a monstrous project and a, and really a weight on our economy for, for 20 years now. We're getting into the home stretch. We're almost there. And so we need to finish that up. Flood control is another one. Flood control is the type of thing that the private sector and a person can't really do for themselves. That's where government needs to be good. And so those are the things that we need to be focused on. And yeah, they, it drives hard decisions. It drives a ton of spending. But we need to, we need to stay out of the other areas that, that maybe aren't the ones that make such a difference in people's lives. And, and you know, that, that goes back to the human relations committee. It goes to things in my opinion, like the recycling program, you know, the, the recycling program is one that if I had been on council, I would not have been in favor of. Simply because the economics don't work right now. And it, it's not a service that is going to do anything for, whether it's the environment, for our landfill and keeping it smaller and things like that. And that's another, another hot button topic that's going to drive division. And we really didn't need to go there.
No.
And so those are the types of things that my pledge to do my part to keep us out of those. Let's focus on what we can do and do well.
Very interesting. So one of the things kind of that some people try to tie in there is some of the social issues that come up. All right. And you, we've addressed the human relations committee in the past couple, a little bit spanning a little bit further back, we had. A very, well, not very wide, a specific flag that was flown at city council or in front of city hall, uh, and that was voted on by the city council. What role does a city play in regulating or monitoring these things like the human relations committee was supposed to do?
Very little is the thing. So, you know, the human relations committee and specifically because it, it had to do with heading towards an anti discrimination ordinance is really where that, that was meant to go. But it's, it's all duplicative. It's, it's not something that's needed at the city level. Federal government takes care of that. There's federal law related to that. There's state law related to that. And so if there's real discrimination going on in our community or in a business somewhere, there's a plethora of laws and, and ways to go about taking care of that.
Yeah.
And so when the, when the local government tries to step into those things, all it does is we saw as it creates division that, you know, over the last couple of years, that's been one of the, the fullest set of meetings at the council. You know, where people were very passionate about it on both sides. That passion needs to take place in coffee shops, in churches, in community centers. And in places where real interactions between people go, not throwing barbs at the city council in front of, in, you know, at the podium. And, and that really to me is what that whole process was about. And, and we needed to remove that from there. And I'm, I'm proud to say that we were able to get that done. And it's not because we wanted to hurt any person or any group. It's because the government just can't do it well. And at the end of the day, Scott Berlin game, who, you know, council member right now, one of my opponents in the race. Scott, I, I respect a lot for the direction he took. He didn't necessarily agree with me completely on, on, on why or how that should happen. But he did agree that it wasn't likely to be successful. And so in, I believe in his mind, that's where he got to is that. We shouldn't continue this because it's simply not going to work.
Right.
And that's, that's a good approach, right? We can come at it from different directions and arrive at the same point. And so. I'm glad that the, the committee's work ended the way that it did. It's not in ordinance today. And so we were able to move on from that and hopefully have a better city going forward.
Right. This is something that, there was something said in the forum, kind of one of the candidates speaking in concern for the future of mine. Are, are you concerned for the future of mine?
I'm, I'm, my main concern is that we will not capture the, the upside opportunity we have. And you know, the easiest example of that is a Sentinel program that's coming with the air force. Okay. You know, it, I'm, I'm excited to get more involved in understanding what's going on at mine at air force base and, and, and with the air force overall. And I, you know, I was at the symposium a couple of weeks ago, learned a lot there. We've got an amazing opportunity coming with that where there's going to be a lot of people coming to town, a huge project spanning multiple years. And we get to, we get to show them what mine it's all about. You know, another story from my, from my family history, my grandpa, who was my step grandpa. He married my grandma when they were both about 40 years old.
Okay.
But he's the only grandpa I've ever known.
Right.
He was career air force, finished his time while he was at mine at air force base, met my grandma and decided to stay here because he loved the city.
Okay.
We have that capability within our city and it happens all the time. I, when I was at M L T, I had back to back managers for our, for our building. That were from mine at air force base, exactly that situation retired and came and wanted to stay in the city. And they were great at running our facility. And so when we look at the future, that's what I think of is let's make sure we're grabbing the opportunities that are there. The Sentinel program is coming. It's going to bring a ton of opportunity, a ton of stressors, you know, what we have the housing, what we have the infrastructure. But we have the, a great opportunity to, to show the air force and the entire country how well we can handle something like that. And I look forward to it. So I think that's. There, there are other risks, you know, that, that are out there, but I, I want to focus on those ones because those are the ones that drive us forward in a good way.
Right. So basically growth and the growth is an interesting topic because, because right now typically what growth means is spending money. That's what it seems like it's equated to in the current setup that we have. And you went and actually wrote a letter if someone wanted to visit your Facebook page, they'd be able to see a little bit that you wrote on growth that you're a fan of it and, and wanted that to see that defined. The question that I have for you on that is where do you feel mine at needs to grow?
So I, I think one of the things, um, it's interesting because we went through the budget process and I, I actually grabbed onto something that our city manager Harold Stewart said. What he said was, we're going to go into the next couple of years in a pruning mode. Okay. So if you, you take this into the garden, you take this into your backyard. I have a great big apple tree in my backyard. That gives me way too many apples and it's hard to manage.
Right.
And so the picture I got from what he said was that we're going to prune back a little bit. We're going to draw back to kind of core fundamentals, like I talked about before.
Right.
Focus there, make sure we're great at it. And that sets us up for the growth in the future.
Right.
So that we're right sized and we're in a good spot. And that's the way that I look at it. And now that's from a government perspective, when we think about city growth and that's on the writing I did, that's the question that I had was. Does that mean population growth? Does it mean growing the, growing the tax base? Does it mean growing the wage base? You know what? There's lots of ways to look at that, right? Just saying, hey, we need to grow. Well, I don't, I don't know if we do because, you know, we had a, we had a huge spurt of growth. And that drove a lot of development. It drove a lot of infrastructure needs. It drove a lot of different things for our city through the oil boom. And we're now sitting at a point where with all that growth, with an increased tax base, with everything that's going on, as you mentioned, we're still the highest property tax city in the state.
Yep.
And so we have to manage that growth and make sure we handle it the right way. That doesn't mean that I would ever want it to slow down or stop. But boy, we better have it running like a, a, a fine piece of machinery to make sure we can adapt to that and have a good city that's growing the right way.
Right. Absolutely. So, so an interesting thing is our population has decreased over, really it's maintained. I mean, you're looking at like small numbers of, of decrease since 2016, I think is the number that's brought up. Do we need to, at one point we were really concerned. We were trying to get to 50K. There, there was a huge push. Make sure you do this census. We need to be at 50K so we can get more funding. Just change the dynamic, dynamics of our city. Do, how concerned do we need to be concerned with population growth?
Well, I, I don't think you, I don't think there's a great way to focus solely on that. You know, part of the, you know, part of the thing, and you know, we talk about things like the magic fund, you know, back in the day in, in the nineties, the magic fund was doing some great things. I mean, heck, as I said, I, I worked for M L T or Delta vacations. One of the great success stories of the magic fund, right? A funded company brought in, at the time it was projected to bring in 600 jobs. It, it probably hovered more between say 350 and 450 most of the time. But still a great employer in the city, a great asset to, to the city, taking over a building that really needed to be taken over. But we're not in that, they're not in that world anymore, right? So, so bringing in 300 plus, you know, say $10 an hour jobs that like that did. That's not where we're at. In fact, we have a workforce shortage everywhere, you know, we're in accounting, we, you know, we have to work hard to bring on new people and define them. It's a very competitive market for everything. Through the entire oil boom, everything that's come out the back end of that, it's been a long-term story of a shortage of workforce. And so. Yes, population could help that. Um, but it's still gotta, it's still gotta be done the right way. You know, it's gotta be driven by people that see minded as a great place to live.
Right.
That is where I think of the air force base, you know, we, we talk about being 13, uh, police officers short right now.
Right.
It's our budget.
Yes.
We're, we're budgeted at 58 officers. We're at 45 right now. We need to focus harder on the security forces that are at mine at air force base. One of the wonderful things about that is because of their background, if they're, if they're in security forces, they can join our police force with two, two weeks of training. Behind a patrol car doing patrol.
Wow.
That's, you know, and that was some of the stuff that was talked about this last week in the budget meetings.
Yeah.
That's where our growth's got to come from, from people who value being in mine that. And that's what we need to be focusing on. And so, you know, the military is a huge part of that. Outside of that, you know, we, we have a great set of employers and, you know, we just need to do the fundamentals, right? We, we need to pick up trash. We need to clear snow. We need to have clean water. Because it's a great place to live as long as you're taking care of the fundamentals.
Absolutely. All right. I want to talk about the city satisfaction survey. This was an interesting thing that came out a little, a while ago. All right. Just a couple of months ago. Um, I only have three points in this, um, but there's, there's a lot in there. If somebody wanted to go take their time and read through it. General consensus might be that mine is a safe place, but there's been some shootings and on the satisfaction sur- survey, 44% felt mine is becoming less safe. Is this, should this be a concern for people? We, we've had several shootings in the past or maybe more than normal.
Yeah.
Even some at homes and stuff like that. It's been interesting. I know you, maybe not everything can be dictated based off of that, but, but what can be done about that?
I guess my first thought on it is, is that it's likely that this is a bit of a statistical anomaly. I mean, it's, it's not something, you know, those of us that have been here many, many years, we know that mine, it's a safe place. And it's not, it's not the norm that that would happen. Um, but I, I think it's like anywhere else. I think if you, if you're involved with, you know, mind altering, whether it's drugs or alcohol or those types of things.
Absolutely.
You mix that with a firearm, you mix that with, you know, making bad decisions, you know, late at night, things like that. It can lead to that.
Right.
You know, one of the things that I, I wasn't particularly happy in the satisfaction survey to see was that there were areas of town where people didn't feel safe at night that, that they wouldn't walk. It's hard to know because of the way the questions are, whether that's related to that, whether it's related to public safety, police, things like that. Or if it's simply, oh, it would, we didn't need better lighting, you know, we, you don't know the detail of why somebody answers the way that they do. But it is things that we need to worry about. And so we need to make sure that we're, we're focused on that. Now, you know, looking at the police specifically, I mentioned a minute ago, we're 13 officers short right now. But that's not, that's solely due to not being able to hire them.
Right.
We're having a really hard time finding them. And that's where we need to start taking a look, you know, in the budget meeting that we had yesterday, the mayor put a big emphasis on that as, as one of his, one of his. Focus is, is we need to find new ways of going about this to go and recruit and to find those, those, uh, those officers that are willing to come to town. So. You know, I, I think that that does need to be a priority. Public safety is a huge thing. You know, part of the, the fire departments ask in the budget this year is to add three firefighters. You know, as I mentioned in the, in the budget meeting yesterday, I, I'm, I agree with that. I think when you, we see the study that was done by the external consultants on that. We see the chief talk about it. Right now we're putting three. When I saw that fire truck go by, there's three firemen in it. Firepersons, male, female. There, there's three of them in there. And when they get to that site, they are less safe than if we had four on that truck. Four is the national standard. That's the way that's generally done. Three, you can do there. It, it works, but they're doing too many. Kind of jack of all trades jobs and they can't focus. And so, you know, the chief has asked us for three, you know, if I do get elected for three additional firefighters, and I think that's a good idea. I think we should make that a priority in our budget. And so one of the things that I mentioned during the budget meetings is our budget calls for 13 more police officers.
Right.
We can't hire them. We, we can't make that happen.
Yeah.
What I would love to see us do is bring that number down to, you know, let's, let's try to focus on getting four. Let's budget for four additional officers. Hopefully we can hire them. But let's use some of that extra space we get from that savings and put it over on the firefighter side where we are fully staffed and hopefully we can hire three.
Right.
And now the fire department has what it needs. We're still working towards getting the police to where they need to be. And we're spending the money in a prudent fashion. That's what I want to see.
Absolutely. So sometimes I think like, you know, three versus four firemen, everyday citizen. This ain't Chicago. We don't got sky rises and everything else. It's a pretty. And so sometimes I think sometimes citizens might feel like, well, that might be the national average, but we ain't the national, we ain't the, uh, average of in the nation. What, what do you say to people that kind of had that, those feelings like it's probably not as big of a priority as we, you're making it?
I think I understand where that, that comes from a little bit. I mean, certainly, I mean, as I said before, I, I come from the conservative end of the spectrum. I would normally be saying, hey, let, what can we do to get by with a little bit less here?
Yeah.
But I'm not sure that that's the case here because when you, when you've got fire showing up to that site and, you know, they, they came and did a demonstration for us and, you know, they're, they're handing each other, oh, here's a, here's a chainsaw that they're going to use to get into a building if they need to. Here's another guy with an axe with something else on the other end of it that they would use here. And if I've got one guy who's got a chainsaw on one hand and an axe in the other. Instead of having the, the fourth person that can focus on that thing, they're all safer. And so the point of it is they, when they go out on these calls, we have an obligation to them to be safe. Cause they're putting themselves in harm's way on our behalf.
Yes.
And number two, it's also better for the person whose house or, or building they're showing up to, to make sure that we're taking care of that and doing it well. And so. You know, to me, this is, that would be a good investment to meet the requirements. One of the other things that people said in the satisfaction survey is they were very pleased with our fire response. And with really everything related to the fire top department, they have a lot of confidence in that. And I think, you know, we don't always have to put things where the squeaky wheels are.
Yeah.
We also want to shore up the strengths and we want to make sure the fire department remains top, top notch because they are today and we want to support them to do that.
Absolutely. Uh, annually, our church does something where we go out and honor the first responders and we stop by at fire stations in different areas in the. And they're, they're always so accommodating that this last time we stopped by, they let my kid get on the truck and stuff. We, we got a great crew of people in Minot. Another key point that came up from the city, city satisfaction survey, there was concern about involvement of the public in decision-making. Only 18% feel that they are satisfied with that. What needs to change here?
Well, okay. So there's a bunch of different things that go with that. And, and I've really seen it over the last couple of years because, because I've been very involved, not just at the city, but at the school board, at the county commission. Really school board and, and cities where I've spent a lot of time in addition to the legislature as well. And, and I, what I. I believe we've got a lot of apathy in our city, in our state, in our country. There's a lot of people that whether it's on Facebook or to friends, they, they, they know that something's not quite right and they, they sort of want to complain about that.
Right.
But they, they're not taking the steps that it actually takes to make a change. And, and as I said at the beginning, part of the reason why that I'm running is that I, I, I believe I can be effective. Because I have shown up, you know, we showed up at the county as an example this last time and brought a couple of thoughts to them as they were going through their budget process. The next morning they met, took that into account and actually changed their budget to match what we were talking about.
Wow.
You can be effective in doing this. The, the elected officials want to be responsive. That's not to say they're going to agree every time. That's not the point exactly. But they need to hear from more than three or four people over and over and over. So that's what I would say first of all about engagement and that, I think that that needs to change on the public's side to, to choose to do that. Now, but I do think there's something from the elected official side that's instructive here as well. One of the reasons why that occurred at the county level was that John Feldal, the president of the county commission right now. That is his style. His style is to ask the crowd, how many of you are worried about this? Please raise your hand. Come to the podium. Tell us about what your thoughts are. It's an interaction. Okay. It's a, it's a discussion. The city hasn't been run that way. I, the city is good. We do personal appearances at the end of every meeting. You can always go and have your say, which is great. But I like the model that the county is using more where there's an interaction there. And the best model, I talked about this at the forum that we had for the, the council. I believe as a city, and I'm going to push for this, should I be elected, that we need to go to a slightly different model for how we handle the business of the city. When there's going to be a vote on a, on a topic. You know, the best example I'll give is the, the Broadway circle project. Okay. Broadway circle, the project imploded, lots of issues that went with that. There's a lot of money issues. Suddenly the city's on the hook for 1.4 million dollars to bail it out. They went through that, the council deliberated, they made their decision. There was no interaction with the public as that went on. In my view, my vision for that is how the legislature does it, where they would open the discussion, they would have a public hearing. An interaction with the, with someone coming to the podium where there's questions back and forth and it's a real interaction. And then they move on and they make their decision. Now they do that, they do parts of that in places. Okay. So they'll have a public hearing on a, on a, a planning issue that's come up. And, and you know, the, the last one that I remember, they had, they had a public hearing on the. they had, uh, they had a public hearing on the, um, excuse me, on, on the lighting district.
Okay.
In, in, uh, southwest Minot. And people were able to have their say, but it still wasn't an interaction.
Yeah.
Because what happens is, is when you stand at the podium, and I've done it many times, or if you're at the DACE, and I've done that with the human relations committee as well. When it's a one-way street and you're talking at the crowd, or they're talking at the council without an interaction, it's way too easy for it to, to get impersonal and to be throwing barbs.
Right.
When you're, when you know that whatever I just said, that they're gonna be able to respond to it, it's a much more respectful atmosphere.
Absolutely.
That's what we see at the state legislature. The people going to the microphones are passionate and they're going to, to say their piece. But there's a decorum to it.
Right.
And the legislators follow that as well. They treat the public with respect. They know the public is their boss and that's a good thing. And that discussion then is much more fruitful. Now, you know, now you're, you know, I've been down there to talk on election bills, ones that I've helped write, you know, we, we worked on. You know, things related to the state budget to try to limit the bu- the spending. And to have those interactions with the legislators and have them question the thoughts that I'm having and, and a real interaction is what we're missing at the city.
Right.
And I intend to try to bring that.
Do you?
Excuse me.
You're great. Do you feel that, obviously since COVID, just to be frank, our whole, the way that people engage has changed dramatically? Do you feel that there needs to be more, and I, things are live streamed and things like that, but there, do you think there needs to be more virtual ways for people to be able to engage with the city council and that might help with some of this?
I, I almost think it's the opposite. I feel like, I feel like we're getting to kind of the, I don't know if the, the end game is here yet, but, but the, the social media wave has brought us to where we are. COVID certainly had a big interaction with that. It drove a bunch of things online and virtual. And so as an example, we were at the, um, the, the entitlement programs, uh, meeting last night at city hall, I think there was eight people there, something like that. Most of us candidates for different things, okay? And, and, but there was a few people online and they were interacting that way. You know, the, the forum for city council candidates, there was maybe forty, fifty in the crowd, something like that. And then another forty to sixty, eighty online at any one time.
Right.
I actually think we need to go backwards the other way, where people are face to face.
Yeah.
And they're showing up and they're talking to council members after, after meetings and before meetings. And you know, one of the other things I've contemplated, if, if I get elected is, is doing more of that sort of town hall setup. You know, whether it's a, a planned coffee monthly or even every couple of weeks, I, I wouldn't mind doing it, you know, the day after each council meeting. Let's talk about what just happened, or maybe it's better the day before, I don't know. But we need more engagement and we need more people talking directly to their council members and being interactive with them. Because it's too easy to sit on those panels and believe that, well, there's nobody here complaining about this, so they must not care. It must be fine if we raise their taxes or if we add this program because nobody's complaining.
Right, yeah.
Well, no, we need the interaction. We need to be talking.
Absolutely true. Yeah, so you mentioned the forum and maybe not as many people as we would have liked to show up to that, but I, in my opinion, it kind of shows a tone deaf nature that the city took by scheduling at four o'clock. Some jobs would be flexible for that, some jobs are gonna be less flexible for that. Do you, do you think that is like just a little drop in the bucket of showing of the city not being as responsive to the citizens? Schedule at five thirty-six, I understand that that's difficult on the candidates because that's eating into you guys' evenings, but also this is something that should be important to everybody involved.
Well, I, I don't know if I would lay that completely at the city's feet. Um, number one, it was, it was put on by the chamber ADC.
Right.
But, but I'll maybe, so, so I, I agree with you. I do like though that the city, um, are, the regular meetings are at five thirty. Most of their business is in the evenings. And I think that that's super important. Because I contrast that, you know, as, right before I came here, I caught a little bit of the school board meeting, I'll go back and watch the rest of it. Those are at four thirty.
Right.
And in my opinion, that's done to help make sure there's less people showing up. I mean, I'm just being blunt about it. They've chosen that path and that is the path that they're ending up with. But one of the other things I want to contrast for you a little bit between Minot and, and, uh, I have a friend who's running for city council in West Fargo.
Yeah.
And she has, it's a completely different world down there.
Right.
They have multiple debates, they have talk radio each day. You know, what you're doing here is so important, especially for Minot. Because this is one of the only other interactions any of us are having.
Right.
You know, so I, I really hope a lot of people are, are watching what you're doing, Jonathan, because we're not getting that here. You know, the last round, and I was a part of that with the Dakota, and, um, we did a city council one in twenty twenty-two, an actual, an actual forum.
Right.
And I loved it. I thought, I thought that it went well. You know, we had Jim Olson there to, to moderate the main part of it and Yeah, it was. And, and I think those things are important. And I look at West Fargo in a bigger community overall with Fargo. But, you know, my, my friend down there, um, is able to go on talk radio daily. She can go, she, she can go to multiple different forums, there's different, you know, just different things going on. We're, we just don't have that, you know? Minot is a little bit different culture in that respect. And, and I, I really wish that people would choose to get a little bit more involved. Because, yeah, I'm gonna bring a different perspective, I hope, to the council and I'm gonna be looking at things a different way that I hope represent me and the people who look at the world the way I do better. But there's nothing saying any of that's right. You know, we each have our own perspectives and we need more people looking at that and engaging.
Absolutely. The last point that we'll bring from the city satisfaction survey was respondents indicated the biggest issues facing Minot within the next five years include high property taxes or high taxes, property taxes, finances, that was eighty percent, housing affordability, sixty-one percent, and crime on the rise, which was fifty-one percent. So basically, what I want from this is, where do you agree with this? Do you, do you, are these some, do these align a little bit with some of the priorities that you have as, as you potentially step into the role of city council?
So certainly, so the first two interact with each other a lot.
Right.
Okay, so when, when we're looking at, at high taxes, particularly property tax and the affordability of housing, those two things drive together, not only for current homes and, and apartments and everything else that's related, that, because that's a part of the equation. Whether you're buying or renting, the property tax burden that's placed on the entire system is raising the prices of everything. Not only that, but it's also making it difficult for developers to enter with new developments as well. And so, and that's why we end up with pressure on things like TIFs. And we, we end up with, and, and again, you know, the, we can get into that more directly if you want to in a little bit. But, but when we look at this, with those satisfaction survey questions, i- it's absolutely a priority for me to get our property taxes headed in the right direction, which is downward. I'll be very blunt about that. It, they need to come down because along with nas and flood, it's a weight around our neck. It is pulling down our economy and keeping people from wanting to make mine at their home. You know, my, my kids are, are both in their first homes that they purchased. My daughter bought her condo. She did everything right. She went to school, she got her degree, she's got a good job, she's getting married, she's done everything the right way. She built her budget and before she could even move in, the budget got broke because the property tax went up. She got her bill in the mail saying, by the way, your, um, your S girl for next year is gonna be bigger than you thought.
Wow.
And so, how do we keep at that time, how do we keep a twenty-four-year-old in Minot?
Right.
Doing the right things when that's the result that we end up with. We have to fix that. And that's just one end of the spectrum. The other end of the spectrum is the senior who's on a fixed income. And you know, th- these are the cliches of this whole argument, right? But, but the point of it is true. The only thing, my in-laws own their condo, okay? The only thing that can put them out of that is getting delinquent on property tax. That's it. Okay?
It's a possibility.
Yeah, it is a possibility. And that's the whole point because it's out of their control. Even without doing any updates or anything with it, the simple increase in their property value can change things. And that's why, you know, there's a lot of discussion about, about the property tax initiative and whether it's right or wrong for locals. What I would, I'll say this about that. I will vote yes on it. I'm not, I'm not maybe the biggest advocate in the entire world, because I don't think it solves everything. I think the, the main issue that we need to be focused on is electing good people, because this is a question about the role of government and what we spend. It's not about where the source of income come from. Now, the reason I will vote yes is that I do still think that the assessment way of doing things, combined with the out of control state spending as well, this is a better alternative to both at once. We put a big burden on the state by saying, look, you're gonna now have to pay for this every year, in every, in every budget at the state level. And it gets us away from the assessment world, which I think is super important.
Right.
And, and what it does is, if the, if the legislature does its job, updates the laws, it allows the local governments to still go and do that if they choose to, but instead they might have to do a, a per square foot price on the lot or a per parcel or however they want to do it. There's other ways to go about it that are not dependent on the value of your house. And oh, shoot, the assessment got me. And, you know, the, the locals, the local officials will pat themselves on the back, well, we held the line on the levy, you know, we, we kept the, we kept the mills down, right? But the assessment still got everybody. So it doesn't, it doesn't help anything.
Yeah.
So, you know, to me, back to the question, those two are very much tied together because that's what's driving the affordability of housing.
Right.
The affordability of housing is being driven by the fact that we don't have developers willing to get in the game right now because Minot isn't profitable for them.
Right.
And so, until that's the case, until we've got more of our local developers willing to put skin in the game again, build apartment complexes, build single-family homes, it's gonna be difficult for us to come out of that. But it all comes back to the burden on the economy that tax is doing right now.
Right, yeah. You drew attention to the, like, spectrums, the, the, uh, older seniors and the youngers trying to get into a home, but also you, you can't be forgotten, the builders right in that middle for either trying to do development of the apartment complexes, single-family homes. It pushes them away, but it also pushes, strain on small business owners and even large business owners that are trying to come in, corporations are trying to come in and build. And they're asking for those TIFs and we don't like those TIFs. Generally, you hear a lot of, uh, uh, angst against them, but property taxes are a problem. So maybe that's what needs to be, uh, fixed. On our, on the Dakota page, we see a lot of people comment when we have something about a TIF, the comment is, yeah, it's a great idea. Why don't we do it for everybody and just end property taxes is simply the, the argument at this point. So let's, let's talk property taxes. Let's start out with the mill. So it was mentioned in the forum. Well, we've seen a decrease in the mill the past couple of years. There was an increase in the mill in twenty twenty-two, there was a decrease in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, but there was a five percent increase in property taxes both years based off the ass- assessment. Where there's a five percent increase in assessments in both those years. So we're seeing a consistent trend. So basically, your solution or not your solution, but you're an advocate of basically the end property tax measure that's, could be on the ballot this November where it would reg- begin to regulate property taxes essentially. Is that the feeling?
Yeah, I, as I said, I, I will vote yes if it's on the ballot. Because I, I think that it does a couple of things well. But at the same time, especially because I'm, I'm working to get elected and to try to do something about this. My focus isn't necessarily there, because even if we, i- it, let's say that we don't get it done.
Yeah.
And I'm elected, I've still gotta go get this done for the people, because we're running on this, okay? My intent is to lower our property taxes. That's it. That's the focus. And so you have to look at how do you actually do that? And that's through doing things the right way at the city with the right priorities. It's prioritizing those fundamentals that we want to make sure that we're doing very well. And keeping us focused there instead of other superfluous things that take away from that and force us to, to raise it. And again, I'll, I'll go back to that, that same project, the recycling project does that. And you know, the city, I, I wrote something on that and put it on our Facebook. The city responded. They put up a big glitzy thing, more or less responding exactly to what I was saying, because they, they felt they could refute what I was going for. And their point in it was, well, don't worry that we're losing, say, three hundred thousand dollars a year when we ship all this stuff down to Minneapolis. Because we introduced user fees to the city and that covers that.
Okay.
Only the government could come up with a, a plan that raises everybody's fees, loses money shipping it out of state and doesn't do anything for our own landfill or anything locally anyway, and call that okay and break even because of that. That, that's, it's the wrong way of looking at it. And so we need to focus on what we can do and do well and do that. And if we do that, it's gonna release the strain on the dollars. Keeping in mind that nas and flood control are a huge strain. Nas is expected to sunset in twenty twenty-nine. When that does, we release forty percent of one of our sales tax dollars.
Wow.
And when that comes off, you know, you're talking about, you know, there are probably five-ish million dollars at that time of, of what will be coming available. And it's important that we are ready for that and that we put that to work to take care of some of the burdens around our city, because we've released one of the big ones.
Right.
Flood's further out. There, you're talking twenty thirty-five and you're talking maintenance beyond that. There's a lot of other stuff that comes. That one is gonna be there for a while. But at the same time, we need to be ready for that. And so one of the big things for me, Minot is a little bit unique. We use very, very few specials. That's something a lot of people bring up. They'll say, well, you can't compare the rates to Fargo or West Fargo or whatever, because we don't do any specials.
Yeah.
Well, I've done digging there. As I said, I have a friend that's running in West Fargo. They've got the exact same issues down there and there's people screaming about specials, they're screaming about their rates. It's, that method isn't solving it either.
Right.
Okay, and so the point of it is, we just need to be focused on keeping everything headed in the right direction without all the extras around the edges, because that keeps everything leaner to start with. And so, that's where we need to be focused. We saw a lot of that in the budget. I mean, to me, it starts with right sizing that police force budget.
Right.
Not the number of people, you know, let's keep them authorized to hire fifty-eight if we can find them. But let's shrink the budget back because those thirteen people represent probably a million and a half dollars that we can't possibly hire.
Does the city, does the city police really want thirteen new employees tomorrow?
If they could hire them, they would. And, and again, I
But, but they, they wouldn't retain them. There's, there's no way it would be feasible.
That's, that's true. And there, there's training costs and yeah, you're right. And, and so really, because here's, and here's the reason why some of this stuff popped into my head. And there's, there's a lot to this story, but so I'll try to keep it in a way that's just interactive here and easy to work with. The city right now has its budget layer that it does, and it puts the number at a certain number and then, and that's that's essentially setting the levy for the people. That's what the property tax comes from, okay? Now, as an, just an easy example, let's say that we budget a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a new assistant city manager. And we put that in the twenty twenty-four budget, but we don't hire him until August.
Right.
Okay, we saved, you know, two thirds of it roughly, right? So the actuals are going to be much less than the budgeted number. But the people don't pay for the actual. They pay for the budgeted number through their property tax. And we need to get that a little bit closer. Now, so I'll be working with, we have a great finance staff, okay? They were very interactive the last couple of days. They answered all my questions and I'm gonna continue that discussion. Because there's a lot to that story. It's not, it's not just as simple as I throw that out, right? There's a lot to it. At the same time though, some of it is that simple.
Right.
Okay, some of it is really, can we hire thirteen police officers anytime soon? Are we better off budgeting for five, asking the people to pay for five, knowing that maybe we could get there? And then next year, let's add the next five if we can.
Right.
But if we can't, let's not keep levying the people for it.
Right.
Okay, that's what, those are some of the things that I want to start looking at right away and get my arms around.
Because what it seems like happens is then you have, oh, well, we didn't spend this money, so we can spend one point three four million on a, on the Broadway Circle project. It gets pushed to other places that people may not actually want their tax, uh, pair of dollars going for, but it's just designated by the city council, which I don't think is necessarily a fair process.
And, and, and on that one specifically, that, that's, that's actually a really good point on that one, because that was, that one point four million or whatever it ended up being, that they had to divert to Broadway Circle. And again, I agree with the decision they made that night. They had to do it. There was no other option because we're not gonna stiff the contractor that's working and make them stop. We're going to pay them. We pay for what we pay for, right? For what we committed to. So they made the right decision that night. The issue was with the decisions before that, going back years and how this came about. And I, I would have looked at it differently. And, and I hope going forward we do that. But the point of that is, that you were getting at is that one point four million dollars came directly out of city reserves. So the city is running a strong reserve. That, that's the thing that we heard from consultants, our finance director, talking about how this looks nationwide. We are very, we're, in that way, we are conservative as a city and as a government to make sure that we've always sort of got our rainy day fund, to make sure we're taken care of. And so, paying one point four million to that doesn't impact our reserves all that much. We're not in trouble suddenly. We wouldn't want to do it a lot.
No.
You know, that's something the school board was looking at and they were, they were facing some major problems. And perhaps drawing down their reserves way more than they would have ever expected. But at the city, we're doing that. But we also shouldn't be making decisions that are focused on padding that either. You know, and, and another easy example is the city, and I, I wish I had the number. I don't have it off the top of my head, so I'm just gonna use a made up one that people shouldn't run with. But the po- the point is this, let's say that we, we budgeted four million dollars for snow removal this past year.
Right.
We had a great year, right? It was, it was a very low year for snow needs. You know, there's a couple storms in there and stuff like that, but I can just well guarantee we spent less than we expected.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so, as, as we go forward with that now, so that will end up in the general fund. It'll end up in the general fund reserves, which would be that rainy day fund that's there for the future. But we're likely gonna go back and levy for the full amount of snow removal again.
Right.
Where a, a slightly different mentality, that's not focused on building that reserve, could be to say we can come in a little lower now this year, from a property tax perspective. Because many of those things are impacting the property tax. And even if they're not directly, because there's a lot of enterprise funds and other, other things that you've got to kind of keep track of with all this. It's not just one big bucket. But even with that, the entire system right now has a lot of money in it and a lot of money Right now has a lot of money in it and a lot of money flowing through it. And if we can focus ourselves back where we should be working with that and make a couple of these tweaks to how we budget. I know the levy can come down and the reason I know it is that our city manager is already saying that. That's that pruning concept. He's saying that, that's what he's talking about. We are going to have a property tax decrease, at least in his budget this year. Depends on who gets elected, whether that actually makes it to the people. And so that's, that's what we're expecting and we're going to go through that pruning process and hopefully that leads us to the fruit of the future. That's what we're headed for.
Right, very good. So it's been a ton of attention drawn to it. But I'll just tie two issues together. TIF and then loosely related Renaissance Zone program. They kind of all implement this general concept, funds come from different places. Big M building, tracks, both get TIFs. We talked about both on, on our podcast. Did both of them deserve it?
Deserves an interesting word. I won't leave you that. So the question is, is what I have voted for. Let's, let's, let's keep it that simple. I would say the big M building is likely one I would have given pretty good consideration. And the main reason is it had sit empty for a long, long time. We were facing pretty difficult decisions that were.
City didn't even want it.
Yep, there was, there was no good way out, okay? There really wasn't. And so for a developer to come in and this is, this is the great side of Epic coming in to do this because they care about the city and they wanna be able to focus there. So that's a good thing. And, and, and I think overall is a good project. You know, we, we talked about it over the last couple of days of the budget hearings. You know, three, uh, three million dollars went into that specifically for the asbestos that had to be remediated and taken out of there. And that's a great way to help that developer who's willing to make that investment and to make that happen. Now, I'm gonna make a big contrast with the tracks. Also another epic development, okay? And I applaud them. It's, it's wonderful. What they're talking about putting in there is a cool concept and it is where many cities like ours are headed and it's great. But I don't believe, I don't believe in the public dollars for that. And the, the primary reason is, is that when they come in and do that, what they're developing, and I realize that the, the dollars are actually for the pavilion and, you know. You get into semantics about what that actually is, but at the end of the day, we've got public funds going to fund. A new development for housing that's gonna directly compete with others who have put their own skin in the game to make it happen. And I'm just in, in utter disagreement with that approach for that type of development on the edge of town. Though they're two completely different things. We use the same tool to do both. And so that's a little concerning to me. Um, the really interesting one actually is the Edgewood one for the, the central, um, parking ramp. That one is a little of both actually, right? So you've got this idea that, well, the parking ramp, we don't want that to be a problem long term. We don't want the city to own it in the first place. Like, there's a lot that's gotta happen. You know, it's gonna need some work to get it to the point where you can build on top of it. Edgewood's brought a concept in that they're willing to come in and negotiate on. So the question becomes, we've got those little elements of, you know, is it gonna become blighted and are we gonna lose it in the first place? But the flip side is, I think, I think the number, if I remember right, it's a hundred and forty apartment units. Again, I, I worked as a property manager, a property management company owner for five years with my partners. I worked with those owners who during the boom put their, put their, their sa, life savings on the line to build these complexes. To try to get rents that fit their business plans. They went after it and made it happen. And to be honest, they're, they're not in great shape today. They, they are not getting the rents that they thought they would get then, and now we're adding more competitors for them. Which is gonna be a driver. Yeah, it helps get housing costs a little bit lower for, for renters, but that doesn't help the developers. And when we talk about not having enough housing in town, it's because the developers are not willing to get in the game right now. So doing these incentive programs for those specific types of things right now in our city, I think is counterproductive. And that's, and so, uh, you know, if I'm looking at it going forward, that will be some of my thought process. There will be those that agree with me on that and there will be those that don't. To switch gears a little bit to the Renaissance Zone concept, you know, we just went through the process. They, they just changed it now. Interestingly, right before an election. When there could have been some different thoughts from the candidates that could have been elected. So they get that done. Now, they, they based it on the legislative changes and I get that, that's. So the Renaissance Zone, one of the things that I picked up on in this last week's city council meeting where they did a review of that and they did the final approval. Is that they were talking about some of the buildings downtown that had done renovations with Renaissance Zone dollars. And, okay, I, I, I understand that. So one of the concepts they said was, okay, we had a building that was sixty seven thousand dollars in value. Prior to it. And I, I don't remember the exact number, so again, it'll be an example, but let's say that they put two hundred thousand dollars, the, the, the owner of the building. Put up two thousand, two hundred thousand dollars to get it done and they got a property tax exemption then for, let's say, five years to get that done. And then out the back end of it, the building's worth the two fifty and they've got a great property tax number. Now, that's gonna be going into the coffers of the city, county, everyone. So that's all fine and good. And I, I agree that that, that that actually did occur. Now, where I disagree was with what was the driver of that? Because what we were told was that that building was paying about a thousand dollars a year in property tax. And so, what that says is that that two hundred thousand dollar project, the two hundred thousand dollars that they put into it. Was held up because they, they wanted to save five thousand in property tax before they would do it. And I, I just don't believe it. The point is if the developer, if it penciled out, if the numbers worked for them, they were going to do that project. It wa, it wasn't an incentive to get it done. It was more of just a, a perk, like a coupon almost, right? You, you had to buy the TV anyway, but you found a twenty dollar coupon, so hey, you're gonna use it. And I look at it more that way. And so I'm not, I'm not anti Renaissance Zone. I don't want people to think that that's the case. But at the same time, it gets back into the same idea. And at that forum in two thousand and twenty two, one of the questions I asked the candidates at that time. Actually, related to the facade program, which is a whole other facet of this, but related to the facade program was. You know, and I wish I'd have worded it different, but what I said was, what's your answer to a, a, a building owner like myself? My family, we own a building right outside of downtown. What's your answer to those of us that own buildings out of downtown? That may have needs and things that we would wanna do to our buildings. And we do them ourselves because that's how we do it. And sadly, the answer was, well, we'd love to expand it, so you get it too. Now, you know, like I said, I would, I wish I would have worded it different because, you know, my thought process there was, let's just keep a level playing field. Let's keep property taxes low. You know, if my property taxes were, say, twenty five hundred dollars less. In about three or four or five years, I could do the improvements just based on that that I wanna do to my building. So let's keep it low for everybody. Let's have a low tax, low regulation environment that's conducive to development and to builders and to business owners. And all of that's gonna occur on its own. We don't need the incentives. And that's, that's the thought process. Again, every project's gonna be its own thing. And so we're gonna look at it individually. But at the same time, my general philosophy is going to be, let's level the playing field and not choose which one gets the money. Cause right now, it comes down to who's really good at the paperwork.
Right, yep. Who can write the best grant.
The best proposal, whatever that is. And, and we need to move away from that.
So another word that comes up in budgets, and we're, we're coming to the end of the property tax stuff, but is, or it's two words, deferred maintenance. And I feel like it's either used to invoke fear, like if we don't do this, we're gonna have deferred maintenance. Or a sense of guilt, we better do this because, you know, we did this to ourselves. How concerned should we be about breaking the budget in order to avoid deferred maintenance?
Well, okay, so I think the, the easiest one, and this goes back to the satisfaction survey. There was a lot of, of chatter in the satisfaction survey about roads. Okay, roads and sidewalks and things like that. And, you know, based on the engineering, um, presentations we got. And based on the, the discussions that were had around that, it, it does take a lot of money to maintain our roads. Especially to the level that we would all like to see them, okay? And so, you know, right now, in our, in our budget, we're budgeting just a flat eight million dollars a year. That's kind of the, the going rate for what we're doing. They do eight million dollars worth of work each year to try to bring everything up to the level that we wanted to. And there's a lot of complicating factors that they do a great job of prioritizing what we should be doing and how we spend that. So, you, you know, your question was, how much should we worry about it? I think of it as, let's get focused there now. Okay, so the point is, is that that's another one of those fundamental services that really only the government can do, right? Nobody would expect, you know, you to handle the street in front of your house or me to handle paving the street in front of my house. We handle our driveways, we might handle parts of our sidewalk depending upon how it works. But the city does need to do this. And so it needs to be a focus of ours in the budget. Now, the city engineer came in and said, look, at seventeen million a year. We can probably start to eat away at the deferred maintenance, the stuff that's, you know, you look nationwide, they say it's. How many hundreds and hundreds of billions and trillions of dollars of deferred maintenance, right? On bridges and roads and all that stuff. But the point is, city engineer said, look, at seventeen, we'll be eating away at it. At fourteen million a year, we'll probably be breaking even about with where we need to be. At eleven million, we're probably stable enough that will do well, but at eight, we're gonna have a major problem. Well, right now, we're at eight. And that was his point. And, and I, I don't doubt him. I, I'm not saying that in any way that he's wrong. But my point is, is that's not just as simple as saying, well, fine then, let's give him the eleven or let's give him the fourteen. It's no, our priority is the people of the city and keeping their taxes where they should be, low tax, low regulation environment. And then through prioritization, we figure out, can we do fourteen this year? Or do we have puppy dog Cooley for seventeen million this year that we've gotta do because that's rotting away and we're gonna have a major problem. So those are the priorities that we've gotta have. And at the end of the day, that is the role of the city engineer. Working with the city manager and, and planners and all that stuff to give us those priorities and let us know what we need to do. That's why for me, it's hard to, it's hard to think that, oh, eight, just a flat eight million forever makes sense. Because it should move with priorities. Like, if we have a late year with other infrastructure projects that need to get done. Or, hey, we can't find a, a contractor that's gonna be able to do this in the next two years, it might be a year to throw fifteen million at, at roads. That's, but it, but it's a prioritization each year. It's not just, well, we're gonna throw eight million at it over and over and over.
We don't actually live in a simulation where everything's just that easy. Throw this much money, this is what's gonna happen.
Exactly. And, and you know, but the flip side of that is, is that, yeah, we might wanna put fifteen million to it, but we can't get the contractors to be able to do the jobs anyway. So there's always, there's all that balance. And again, I give those guys a lot of respect to the city because they're managing all of this at once. In addition to federal regulations and state funds and federal funds and all the pieces that go with that. So their job is very complicated and I hope to be a help to them from the council to make that happen.
Right. We actually have a pretty big, big, uh, city.
We do, we do. There's a lot of roadways.
That, there are. And just pulling up, uh, the number, so the two thousand and twenty four adopted budget is, was just under two hundred million dollars. That's a lot of, lot of, uh, work that somebody had to do to make sure that, that all balanced out. Well, I really appreciate you joining us. I, I have basically two questions. There, they'll be simple ones. The first one is, why should someone's vote for you?
Well, I think right now, I, along with my running mates, we represent a picture of the city. Again, that's focused on fundamental services, the thing, pe, things people want. They wanna be safe. They want good roads to drive on. They want clean water. They want all those pieces. And we need to do that with the focus on keeping a low tax and low regulation environment. Now, it may be easy to say and, and there are others that will probably say you can't do both of those things at once. I, I absolutely believe we can because we choose to. We make a commitment to do it and we follow through and make sure that that happens. And does that mean that we're going to need to, to prune back in a few areas? Absolutely it does. But those are the priorities that we do then. And if we make those happen, the, the people of the city are gonna be very happy with those results. And I think that I, 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 I'm an important person, I think, for the council right now to come in to lead that charge. And, and that's, that's the role I see myself coming into. Um, hopefully I've got my running mates to work with me on that. Otherwise, I'll be working with the rest of the council to make that happen as well. But one way or the other, that is my commitment to head in that direction. The city manager is already saying those same things, whether it's a result of our campaign or a result of the satisfaction survey, probably a combination of all of those. I think we can make it happen. I think the city is committed and, and the staff is ready to go that direction and we're gonna go make it happen. And I think that's a good reason to give us the chance because that's what the people are looking for and we're looking to bring them exactly that.
Absolutely. And so if someone buys into the vision that you are presenting, how can they support you?
So best way you can do it right now, go to betterminot.com. Um, you'll get our website there. You can read all about, about us and about our vision for where things are going. You know, if you do wanna donate, you can do that. You can request a sign. Um, but really even bigger than that, I, I would love it if people do take a look and do that. Bigger than that is just if they believe in what I'm saying and the direction we're going is come out and vote for us, June eleventh. That's huge. We need people to get out and vote. We've had very low numbers of voters for years. And also tell everyone they know, you know, I, I'm, uh, as other political things I do, I talk about lighting a fire under people. Getting them, getting them back to what our founders felt when they were trying to right the ship with their country or get their country off to the right start. I feel that same fire and I try to instill that in others, in, in many things that I do. And I hope that people see that from me and they're willing to tell their friends and neighbors and family and everybody that this is who we wanna support. We need to get them on the council because the vision's right and we're headed in the right direction. And that's my commitment to the city.
Very good. Well, thank you for coming on today.
Yep, good to see you.
Yes, this has been another edition of Minot Matters here at the Dakota and brought to you by Shock Safe and Lock. I'm Jonathan Starr. Be sure to follow us on Facebook, like and subscribe on YouTube, become part of the Dakota community where we continue just to bring you great news. Of Minot and the surrounding areas. Thank you for watching this video and have a great day.